Study session of the Town Board of the Town of Estes Park on October 14th, 2025 is now in session. Our first topic, Vacation Home Regulations Update Discussion. And we have Town Clerk Jackie and we have Town Attorney Dan and we have the enormous bell. Go ahead and ring it one more time for the record.
That's for our, oh my goodness.
All right, we're good to go.
It's horse race.
I hope we don't go full nine rounds tonight. Thank you, Mayor and Board. We are here again tonight to talk about vacation home regulations and some proposed code amendments. Just to kind of go high level, we're here to talk about transferability, which we talked about earlier this year. Attorney Kramer will go over some of the staff draft concepts and help, hope to flesh some of those out for preparation of an ordinance and review some of the board's direction from last time. Then we'll talk about hosted vacation homes. Again, we're doing a really high level just to make sure that we got it right before we bring it forward to you. We're hoping November 12th to bring it forward to you. Go over those high level code amendments as well as the waitlist that we talked about last time. And then I have a couple miscellaneous code amendments that I'd like to discuss with you tonight. And we'll get into those later. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Kramer to go over transferability.
Thanks, Jackie. Good evening, everyone. So you all may remember from a few months ago now, there was a conversation that we had at a study session about transferability of non-transferable licenses, which acknowledges a contradiction in terms. But the concern or the concept was that even though these licenses as of 2021 cannot be transferred from one license holder to another, there's the potential that some may see a loophole in creating a single purpose LLC or other business entity that would allow for the entity ownership to be transferred rather than the license itself. So in getting into that conversation, we discussed, and there was general board direction, but not everyone agreed, discussed bringing back a concept that would limit license holders to natural persons only. And then as an offshoot of that, there was some concern that if we did that purely, then there'd be no ability for license holders to transfer to their children or other immediate family members. So we got into a conversation about what that might look like. And the result was for staff to flesh out that concept, draft a list and that we discuss it at a future study session where we are tonight. I remember clearly saying, no matter what list we drafted up, it would be wrong. And we'd have to, if there is a right result, we'd have to reach it through conversation. But we've pulled together at least a starting point for that conversation for you. And that is on this next slide. So first of all, you know, fundamentally, we would limit any transfer of non-transferable licenses to natural persons. And then the list we came up with, and this really was an adaptation and a narrowing of our town employee bereavement policy, but keeping it very narrow here. Spouse, child, sibling, grandchild. I suppose it could be narrower than that, too. All including legal adoptions, of course. And then sort of a catchall, recognizing that there are personal relation. And this comes from the bereavement policy more or less as well. There are some relationships that aren't captured by those legalities. So if you're in a household with someone, you share that household with them and you're in a personal relationship of some sort, then upon the death of the license holder, it could transfer to that person. Without having the death requirement in there, it seemed a little possibly too loosey goosey where you can invite someone to participate in your household and then say, now they qualify. So that's why we threw death into that particular qualification. I expect that that's going to generate a lot of conversation. So we can kick that off now or we can loop back to that. One thing I do want to mention is a question arose about common law marriage and whether that would qualify. And I think it's a good question. To me, courts struggle with whether folks are common law married or not. There are a lot of factors that go into that. There can be arguments in one direction and counter arguments in another direction. So I think it's probably more practical for the clerk's office to be dealing with that catchall that we've thrown in here about sharing a household than try to determine common law marriage. Trustee Hazelton.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. This is the, I asked this question because I, it specifically related to the relationship must be documented to allow verification by the town clerk. And maybe you're going to talk more about this too next up. But that was my question about how, you know, Colorado is pretty loosey goosey with common law marriages. You live with someone for a very short amount of time, it can be considered common law. So I was just curious about if we have, you know, I know I have people in my life who have been together for years and years and aren't married. And maybe they would not want to have both of those people on that license because their assets are kept separately. Just kind of how we might address that and really the administrative burden for the town clerk's office. How are, you know, how do we create a situation in which they're not trying? Similar to the residency question that we have visited with hosted SDRs. How do you define if they're in a personal relationship or not? So that's my question is, what's, what does documented mean for that?
Right, I think typically we'd be looking for a marriage license, an adoption certificate, something that's issued by the state. For this second bullet, there are some in here that are less concrete. And that would be a judgment call for the town clerk to make, whether there's been enough, you know, tangible evidence presented to the town clerk to demonstrate that that relationship exists, that that burden of proof would be on the person trying to demonstrate the relationship. So I, I don't think we want to limit necessarily the type of documentation or the type of evidence. So I think we left that open ended for the purposes of this conversation. But if they can show something to the town clerk and the town clerk says, oh, yeah, this is pretty clear. That relationship did exist, then that would be enough. But common law marriage is a lot more complicated than that. And so I was trying to avoid diving into that.
So I understand the concept of a family transfer, you know, I, but some of these houses are going to be passed on to a next generation that includes multiple family members, more than the two that you've identified. And it doesn't seem to me that that's the part that's objectionable. The issue is who controls the thing, who is responsible? And that we should have sort of one sort of, some sort of responsible person on the license? And that that must be a family member is defined here. But that the ownership itself could be broader, could be, you know, even an LLC. I mean, a lot of people are going to put them in an LLC. They're going to be advised to put them in an LLC for a variety of reasons. So to me, the, the real issue is who is controlling the rentals, the maintenance, the occupancy, all of those issues that come. And that there'd be one person designated, I wouldn't even make it two. I think that becomes problematic to have that multiple. But the ownership itself to me is not really the issue. It's, it's that there is one natural person who is a member of the family controlling it. And so I'd like to look at that as a kind of an optional way to go with this. There's one other thing, and this is interesting because I have a similar problem for a client of mine that has a shareholders agreement that limits ownership to family members. And we have a definition similar to this. But what happens is occasionally you'll have somebody that owns it that wants to leave it to like a niece or a nephew because they don't have children. And I'm not sure we want to discourage that either. The, the key is that there is a family connection to this. It's not a corporate connection, it's not, you know, some sort of, other sort of connection. So I don't know, I'm just struggling with that because we have that very problem with the shareholders agreement we have with this client. They, there's somebody that owns stock that has no children, grandchildren. There are siblings, but they want to leave it to nieces and nephews. So I'm wondering whether we want to maybe expand this family definition just a little bit. I wouldn't expand it a whole lot. But nieces and nephews, cousins can get kind of complicated because you have cousins first removed.
Fourth cousins.
Yeah, fourth cousins, you know, you know, we may be fourth cousins with somebody here. So I'm not sure I'd extend it to cousins, but nieces and nephews is something I'd like to think about and get some impact, get some points of view. But to me, regardless of what we do, it's not multiple owners is the problem. It's multiple control and responsible parties. Because remember, it's a license, so that person is accountable for the license.
Right, so trustee Brown, to take your first question first. I think that what we've drafted up here is in line with the way you're thinking about it. The home could be owned not by the license holder only. It could be a different ownership set up for the home. And normally for our licenses, business licenses in general, we make the owner be the license holder. So this is a departure from that. But we would allow a different ownership setup for the home. The license holder is what we would be regulating here. And then you'll see a couple bullets down that the licensee, that license holder, would just have to demonstrate an ownership interest in the home. They wouldn't have to be the sole owner.
Perfect, that's what I was trying to get at.
Great. So on the second question, you know, I, I think that that's a fair question for conversation. Should niece nephew be in here but not first cousin? What about great nephew? At a certain point, there's got to be a cutoff if we're going to make it immediate family. And this, this list is a draft for adding, subtracting, whatever the board wants to do. Mayor Protem?
Oh, I'm sorry, here's one first, that's one.
I turned it off so you could speak.
Oh, thanks, I wasn't really ready. It's second bulletin that I'm kind of just having still an issue with. And at first I was thinking, well, anybody, upon, upon death, I actually think anybody that the house goes to. You know, I don't care if it's a fourth cousin. If the house in, by the will, whatever, is transferred to a person, even it's the neighbor, I don't care. If we're going to make that transferable, I think it should be transferable. I don't think we start going through spouse, child, sibling, grandchild. I actually don't particularly like that one. If they're... I, I see where the problem is. I mean, if you, if you're older and you want to give your house to your child and you're not dead yet, it should maybe go through, so I get that. So I'm not sure, I, I don't agree with cousins and, and six cousins and, because everybody's a cousin at some point. I mean, I'll probably find somebody's related in this room, right? But I think upon death, I, I would think that it should go to anybody that the house is willed to. If we're going to be transferable, I'm not into transferable, so. But if we're going to transfer it, if I will it, my house to you, it should be transferable as far as I'm concerned.
First, I had a question. The, was it one, two, three, four, fifth bullet? Up to two natural persons can be on one license if they share that relationship. What relationship are we talking about?
Well, one of the relationships in those bullets above. So either spouse, child, sibling, grandchild, or the personal relationship in the home upon death.
Okay, so it couldn't be common law marriage, they could both list themselves as license holders? Because they don't fit that qual, that qualification up above?
Correct, that, that would not be a basis as this is drafted up.
Okay. Just a couple comments. One, I think the niece and nephew one, I wouldn't mind adding that either. It's, it's interesting because it just hit me recently. My sister has a home and she has no kids and nobody else. And was looking at leaving her home to a couple of our nieces and nephews. And she's got some issues with that legally. Now, it's not in this country, so some other inheritance loss things, but would like to keep it in the family. So I'm seeing that go through and I still want to keep it in the family. The transferable to the family members, is there a particular reason that we're making the death qualification? I mean, if, if someone just wants out of it, like a sibling, can they transfer it to another sibling? And without having to die to do it?
So the way this is drafted up, if you're in that first bullet of relationships, that death would not be a necessary component. So it could go sibling to sibling without death. It was only that second sub-bullet there.
All right, because I'm not comfortable requiring death to do something. That seems a little drastic.
And one other question. It's in the beginning of time, I bet, not beginning of time, but beginning, we started talking about this. I was actually against transferring, except for the ones that are grandfathered because we're already there. So is the concept of the new licenses just not being transferable? Have we discussed that? Because I still have a problem with these licenses being there forever and us having the cap, which I do believe in the cap, some people do not, but I do. But those houses being more expensive because they're transferable over time. So I think at the very beginning, we should have made them non-transferable and you enter back and say, I mean, we didn't. So I get the grandfathering, the ones that are there. But my thought is, and my thought will always be, that when we could stop transferable licenses and they have to join back the lottery or whatever, that's what I would be for. So all these are good concepts, I'm not for any of them because of that. You know, except for the ones that we can't change because we've grandfathered in kind of thing. So that's my thought on it.
And, and I agree with Marie. I think the, I think we were thinking about, well, gosh, you know, you know, my grandmother had this house and then she left it here and down there, you know, goes down the road. Well, it's not going to go away just because we don't do a transferable license. That option to return it to rental is still there, but they would have to join the lottery or what have you. It's just not a guaranteed, it's not like the house is going to not be passed down to those people. It's just the option to rent it is not. And so I think we don't want to lose focus. I, I, you know, I was like, well, gosh, we don't want that house to not be passed down. But that's not what we're talking about. It's the rental possibility of having that house be able to be short term rental. Well, I think the sooner we get out, like Marie states, of having transferable licenses, the cleaner things would be. And that doesn't mean that they can't, you know, jump on the, the list again just because the, the person passed away or, or it was transferred out to a sibling or what have you. So I'm not convinced that we should do a non-transferable license transferring under these conditions myself. If that's the direction that the other trustees want to go, I would definitely want to have niece and nephew in there. Because I believe, yeah, not everybody has children, right? And so they want to pass it down to somebody, but they don't meet those other criteria. But I'm not convinced that we should even do a non-transferable license transferable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused because I thought that way we were headed is for the pre-whatever date that is, 2021 licenses, that's all we're talking about with this.
The post.
Yeah, and I don't think I favor transferability on the post licenses period. Partially because I, I kind of agree that it, it might have been a mistake at the time, creates some weird economic incentives here that I'm not sure we should be in the business of, you know, calling balls and strikes as the chief justice would say. I, I mean, we can call balls and strikes, but we shouldn't choose one over the other. And that's, so I, I think I do not favor the post, the later license being transferable at all. But these concepts seem to me to take, make a lot of sense in the context of the transferable licenses. So I don't know, you know, I guess, again, I'd go back, even with the non-transferable licenses, you know, I would like to have the individual be the license holder so that you have somebody to hold accountable for it regardless. And, you know, the ownership could still be in a different manner. So if we can do it that way without really making it transferable, it's instead, you know, I guess it's still non-transferable then. But that you would, could ignore, you know, the form of ownership if that was not a material change.
Trustee Brown, I could see that working where we just say, okay, there's going to be a transition period where you have to transition the license holder to a natural person or two. And then no further transfers beyond that period. The ownership can stay how the ownership is. But if, you know, if there's, if those two license holders or one, depending on how we make the rule, pass away, then there's no further transfer within the family, it goes back to the pool.
But even with that, I'd be concerned about ownership of people, by people who are not family members of the license holder. So I think that connection somehow needs to be maintained. So I know this is a difficult drafting issue to say the least.
No, trustee Brown, I can see it where when you, when you transition to a natural person, that natural person has to demonstrate an ownership interest in the home.
Right.
If that's what you mean, we can still incorporate that.
Well, and the transfers of the ownership beyond that person. So I can see somebody being the license holder who's just a straw man for the benefit of, you know, maybe it's one of the, the, maybe it's a family member initially, but they decide, well, I think, I like managing these, so I'm going to manage them even though some of them are not owned by me. And I, I think that runs afoul of what we're trying to achieve with the transfer restrictions in the first place. So, you know, the ownership is not irrelevant to the natural person license holder. There needs to be that maintained connection in my view.
Well, I think moving forward, we could say that if you want to register a new one of these, that, that would need to be a home held in ownership by that natural person, by that license holder. We could do that, too. The, the transitional part is what we need to work out, and I think there's a way to do it.
Okay.
Where it's already owned by an LLC.
This is one other question. And this is, you may say it doesn't pertain to this because it may not. This is the pre ones, the ones that are grandfathered in. I know we talked about this once. Have we talked about the possibility of being that they are transferable once? Because the kind, but that had, I'm not just, we haven't, we haven't talked about that as being a policy yet. Because that way, I mean, it's not like a contract that we have till 2000, you know, 75 that this house has to be one, with, if we said they could be transferred, if they had transferred them once and never again, we still kind of go with that contract with the first person. And I get this is the post, but that's, that kind of goes along with this. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out again, that we haven't actually put that in policy. But that'd be something I'd really be interested in looking at.
That's to limit the number of family transfers over time.
Oh, no, 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 well, maybe, maybe. But I'm really talking about the pre ones, these are all the post ones. I'm talking about the pre ones being able to transfer, not family members, I mean, when you sell the house. Because right now you sell, it can be inevitable, it could be 4,000 years from now and they still have the same license, which I actually don't think is right. So if we have it that when they sell the house, there's one, they can sell it one time and the transfers. That way you've kind of kept the contract with people that you have it already. But this is not going to go on for 4,000 years. And then they have to enter the pool if it gets sold again. So that's, I get it's not this, but I really want to talk about this in conjunction with this, so.
So Mayor Protem, I'm happy to have that conversation. I'd ask that you let me follow up separately on that one if we want to discuss that too?
Yeah, so are we able to change the rules on the pre 2021s? I mean, it seems like we're changing the rules in the middle of the game for those folks.
Trustee Lancaster, that sort of consideration is why I'd like to be able to follow up separately.
Okay, so anyway, I might have some concerns about that, changing things midstream also.
It just doesn't say you can transfer it forever.
Yeah, okay. But it does say the licensee must demonstrate an ownership interest in the home. So you couldn't just transfer to somebody else who doesn't have either family ownership or something that they have the ownership interest. So I, I think that's important, important there. And I guess I'm, I'm okay with, with it, with the family member thing. If we're into the trans, I like this outline with expanding it to, to nieces and nephews. And then we can talk about, if we can limit the number of family transfers over time. And we're talking about generational changes, then that's way larger scope than we're in. But I think a lot of these homes were family homes. It doesn't, and you're right, it doesn't change the ownership, it's still the family home, they just can't rent it out. I think there's some, maybe community interest in having a place that has been a vacation rentals, designed, has operated as one of it. Not freeing that license and moving it somewhere else and disrupting some other neighborhood. There's, I think to that continuity, there's, there is some value to that in my mind. Transferring to a family and they keep it in the family, I would favor that.
I'll mention that I think we have this till 550 is at least the planned window for the entire topic, not just the transferability.
I just have one observation and maybe some clarification in the second bullet of the second bullet that starts with upon death to a person. It seems broad and open to interpretation by the clerk's office and the applicant or the party that owns the home. How would you define shares of household? And then separately, how would you define personal relationship?
Those are both great questions, trustee Eichel. And I think the more precisely that you try to define it, the trickier it gets.
Agree.
I would, I would say that generally, sharing a household could be demonstrated by both having a permanent residence in the same location. You could further bolster that by showing shared expenses if there was any question about the former point. Personal relationship is quite intentionally broad. What does that mean? It could be a friend, it could be a romantic interest, showing that you've been living with them over time in that home.
It could be a roommate.
That's what we're getting at. It could be a roommate if you demonstrate, you know, the personal relationship there and not just renting.
But it fits the definition. I, I wonder why the second bullet in the second bullet exists?
The second bullet and the second bullet exists to, because while A, I was trying to adapt from the bereavement policy, which might or might not be applicable. And B, because I was anticipating that there might be some concern that spouse was too limiting.
And if we require documentation to allow verification by the town clerk, a spouse or some type of relationship that is formal would necessarily be in place and could be governed by the language in the first bullet of the second bullet. So I just wonder about that whole line being necessary. Because it opens it up to, I mean, I could work that out with a friend of mine that I moved in with and paid expenses for six months and had a friendship. And I could take that over. I mean, if we're trying to limit this in the way that we're talking about, I want to be able to give my children or to receive from my parents the value in their vacation home. I think that if we have an asset that's in a family, it's reasonable to think that you could pass that down. I think. And we would strip away that value instantly by some of the language that we're, we're considering here. So I would be in favor, if transferability is going to be part of it, that, that we open that up to family. And, or I or anyone else could use that second bullet to create a relationship and create a sharing household. So I just think it's a loophole that we probably don't need. But I am not an attorney, so I appreciate you listening to what I observed about that language.
No, that's fair, trustee Eichel. And concerns about it being too broad and open to abuse is exactly why I put in there that it would only be available upon death.
Okay.
I think that's why, not to, I know we need to move on to the other ones, but I think that's what, if I'm looking back at my notes from June, we started talking about this because there are a number of homes since 2021 that are in LLCs. And so the transferability is- And so the transferability is happening whether we like it or not. So we're trying to figure out how to manage that, right? I'm.
That's right. We, we had about twenty of these licenses and about half were held by business entities.
Right. So what we're trying to address is the loophole, not should we allow transferability? No, we're trying to solve an issue. We have already decided we're not allowing transferability except that we have this issue of people putting it in LLCs. So I think the, I, the flip side of it, too, is if, you know, something happens to somebody, let's say right now, I'm cur, this might be a question for Jackie. Let's say somebody who holds, holds a vacation home license, a natural person, holds a vacation home license right now, something happens to them, they pass away. How quickly are they required? Is that license required? What happens with that license? Because that person's not, you know, they don't, they're not alive anymore. Does it just continue through the end of the year? How, you know, and the reason I'm asking is because if we're talking about exceptional guest experiences is one of our strategic objectives. You know, if somebody, you know, the family comes in and says, okay, this license is under this person's name, they passed away, we need to do something with it. Are we requiring that they all of a sudden cancel all the reservations that are on the books? Like maybe they've got reservations for the next year, right? And then what are we, you know, maybe they, they come in a week later and they've got to cancel reservations tomorrow, you know? So I guess that, I'm not trying to get too far into the weeds on these like specific questions, but I think those are things that may come up. So that's one question. And then also if we're going to talk family members, too, we might even want to consider, we've got children, but parents, a lot of younger people have vacation home, something happens to them and their parents, we may want to consider parents as something that they can receive that back. So, but my first question, I'm just not sure what the process is when something like that happens.
Sure. So we generally don't find out until renewal time.
Okay.
Because people don't think about it, right? They're dealing with a lot of other things in the moment. And so we're really talking about the pre because we haven't had a lot of time with the, the post licenses. So in, with a pre license, they come in, they try to renew the license, they transfer it to a new own, new family member if they're keeping it in the family or, or whatnot. If they have sold it and they haven't met the transferability criteria, that license goes back into the pool. And those people are notified that they no longer hold a current license, the, the new owners of the property. But when it's happened to a family member, they've transferred it to, or transferred it, they've put a new individual from that family on the license with the pre. So kind of what you're talking about here, right? But we haven't found out about it, you know, maybe six months later, when the renewal process has occurred. But it's still in the family. If it's sold and they haven't done the transfer, haven't gone through the transfer process with the time limits, the license is no longer valid. And they do need to cancel those reservations because they don't have a valid license. We haven't incurred that situation with the post at this point. If that were to happen, it would be that they were, it's not transferable at this point in time. So we've had, like, again, we've had a family member, a parent pass away and, and the children want to put it into an LLC. And we've allowed that to happen with the pre.
So and that's how I recall the conversation. It was more of the LLC situation and how do we top, how do we handle those? So is this really addressing those? Or are we just adding more? It seems to me maybe unless I'm all wet, that we kind of lost our focus on exactly why we were going to talk about the non-transferable licenses and how to deal with the LLC issue.
So trustee Younglin, yeah. So it, it's an offshoot of that conversation. Because once we realized the potential for people to perceive a loophole by creating an LLC and thereby being able to transfer this to anyone, once we started talking about closing that potential off, then the conversation arose, well, is that too harsh to family members if you were trying to create a family LLC? And that's how we got here.
So that's really what the first bullet does, because it has to be a natural person, right?
That's right.
So that takes care of that issue with an LLC.
That's the central piece of this, yes. And then the question is, were there unintended consequences regarding family members that we wanted to allow to receive this license? But as I'm hearing it, and mayor, you, you may have something you wish to say that'll answer this question. I'm hearing currently three board members saying they'd like to see something like this and three board members saying they would prefer to see just no transfers, period, and it needs to be held by a natural person.
Well, I want to, I want to put things in place to stop the LLC stuff going. That's what I want to do.
That's that one, right?
Yeah. So, but everything else, I, I, I would like to see differentiated in here. To me, this is confusing to me. We're also, I feel also looking at how we can have a transferability, you know, through spouse, sibling, child, all that. So are we going more, are we going further than what we need to, to just address the LLC issue of short-term rental? I guess is my question, because I want to address that, because I understand that that loophole is being used. But I don't want to lose focus on that and get muddled with this other. And I feel like maybe that's going on, I don't know. I'm muddled.
Sure. No, the answer to that is that we could absolutely answer this question, just sticking with that top bullet point, not getting into transfers to family members whatsoever.
And you said there was about twenty of these?
There are about ten of these currently, about half of the twenty or so licenses of this type.
Yeah, so we're talking about a pretty small number.
Well, it could also affect any new ones that happen. The idea being that more and more vacation homes are going to be in this license type over time.
Yeah, and I'd be generally in favor of those who are looking at just clamping it down so we can keep it clean. Rather than trying to create, I too, that upon death thing. It looks remarkably vague to me. And to have the town clerk have to make that judgment and then the next day make a judgment differently on one that someone wants to argue about, why did you? But again, we're talking small numbers at this point, even though they may grow. So
So.
let's not add out of focus.
So are we suggesting, sorry, mayor, just clarifying, we're suggesting bullet one, the licensee must demonstrate ownership interest in the home. Up to two natural persons can be on one license, period, and require transition of existing licensees to natural persons in 2027 renewals. Is that what we're collectively sharing with you?
I think that's what I'm hearing from a bare majority now. We haven't talked about the two versus one, but I, I haven't heard any concerns with allowing two natural persons rather than one.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
And then, yeah, requiring that transition, transition to happen as we're renewing from the 2026 to the 2027 year.
And one last comment from trustee Brown.
I just wanted to say I'd, I'd, I'd strike the upon death provision as well. That seems like too big a hole for me.
I think trustee Brown, we're talking about not even going there because there would be no transfer to any family members.
Oh, yeah.
So, and then the only question remaining in my mind at that point would be if we're allowing two persons to be on that one license, do they need to be related? Or can they just be any two individuals who have an ownership? It seems to me if we're requiring them to have an ownership interest in the home, then it can be any of those two people who have that interest. So that, I think that answers that.
Good.
Yeah, I think if they can demonstrate that they're part owner, then they would be allowed to be on that license. I, I wouldn't think they would have to be related.
That seems to focus it and not open up whole new passageways.
Thank you all.
All right. Part two.
Okay. Hopefully we can get through these fairly quickly. You have talked, I, I think I used the, the word in nauseam about this. I know you probably feel the same way, but we just really want to highlight the, the changes that we've talked about so that we make sure that there's nothing that you are not expecting high level. So we've talked about hosted short-term rentals. You've decided that it's going to be captured under the definition of vacation homes. So it can be hosted or not hosted, all in category for those residential vacation homes. So that's being done by removing that limitation that you cannot be present. The residents, homeowners can't be present during a rental. And adding that as the statement there, vacation home may also include primary residence of the same dwelling unit occupying the premise at the same time as nightly guests, meaning they can be there while they're renting a portion of the home out. Or they could rent the entire thing and have it unhosted. So it adds it to, adds that element to our current residential vacation home cap.
Yeah, a couple sessions ago, we were talking about three separate categories. We then in the last session talked about, well, with minor changes to the ordinance or whatever it is, regulation, we could encapsulate all in the one.
Correct. So this would just create one category, maintaining the category we have for unhosted and including hosted in that category with this change. So no other, no other changes to, to the definition to incorporate that piece. We talked about workforce housing regulator, regulatory linkage fee. Wow, that seems hard today. And we talked about that would apply to all vacation homes. So this definition or this addition just states that, I think clearly, that it would apply. Residential cap, there was some discussion on that as it relates to the current B and Bs that are, are licensed. We noted no changes to the residential cap after we reviewed it in April. However, the discussion was to allow current licensed B and Bs that were licensed by May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the option to apply for a vacation home license above and beyond the residential cap and give them that one-time ability to do that. So we're setting that here and requiring them to come in and apply for a vacation home license if they prefer to operate that way. And in essence, probably be a hosted vacation home versus a B and B. As a number of these, we believe can't meet the B and B regulations or are not interested in meeting the B and B regulations as they're written today. So we would have them do that during the renewal process for 2026.
And again, we're talking quite a small number.
Eleven.
And if we wait too much longer on this, then we might run into problems with that being the deadline. But
Correct.
if we move fairly expeditiously on this, like in early November or even earlier.
Our intent is to bring this back to you on November twelfth, after, with final edits to an ordinance that we can bring forward and present to you.
So far, this is matching my memory.
Perfect.
So can I just interject here with a question? So my, my recollection was they would be added, but we aren't going to increase the cap. They would just be added and we would not fulfill anybody leaving until we get back down under that cap.
Correct. Okay, trustee Younglin, yes, we would, we would allow you, these and only these properties to take us over that cap number of three twenty-two today. So let's say after January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, we had eight of these and we were at three hundred and thirty. We would not take anybody off of a waitlist or process any new applications for residential vacation homes until we got under that three twenty-two again. Correct. Compliance inspections. So part of the compliance inspection that we currently have, code enforcement completes for us, would be to inspect the house for anything such as illegal duplexes, accessory dwelling units, those sort of things that might be on the premise. And then, of course, elevate those to community development or however we would need to address those issues as they would arise. So that would be added as part of the compliance inspection to address that concern. Any questions or any thoughts on any of that before we go on to the waitlist?
That really, after multiple discussions, sinks very well.
Perfect. Excellent. The residential vacation home waitlist. We have currently exhausted that waitlist. We no longer have a waitlist. We took all the properties off recently and are in the process of moving those through the process. We've had a couple already decide they don't want to continue. They started down the process and have decided it's not worth their time, energy and money. So they've not pursued it. So we will have a couple openings come December or come January first, just so you know.
Well, we can't open them up if all these eleven went on it, right?
Right. My, my point is, is that if some of the B and Bs do decide to take that advantage of that, we'd be just below the three twenty-two. I think we're probably going to be at three twenty. And so we might not have, you know, the full eight. If eight were to come off, we'd only be at like three twenty.
Okay, okay.
Eight, if I'm doing my math correctly, instead of three twenty or three thirty. So residential vacation home, what we talked about last time are a couple options. The board decided they liked the lottery and the waitlist with a cap and wanted to combine the two. That was trustee Hazleton's brainstorm there. And so we've taken that and come up with some language to address that. What, what it was decided at that board meeting is this allows an equal chance to properties. Anybody who comes in, gets on that wait, gets in that lottery, and then they have a random chance of being chosen to be placed on that waitlist. It provides certainty that that property will at some point have a chance to apply if they, they manage to get on that waitlist. And then it kind of helps limit some of the administrative elements in our office. So some of those code amendment language, we have here that after February first, which is after the renewal process, if we have ten or fewer applications on our current waitlist, then we would open a lottery. And we would add applications to that waitlist through that lottery. We would not allow any more than one application per property. So you couldn't have mom and dad and sister and I guess niece and nephew potentially come in and apply for the same property. Only one application. And if we got multiple, it would just disqual, disqualify all the applications for that lottery. But there was an interest in properties that did not get chosen from that lottery, that previous lottery to be on the waitlist to have a greater chance. So we're adding that as well as an option for us to administer in the clerk's office. We would also have a cap on that waitlist of thirty. We think thirty's manageable. It's about a, probably anywhere from two to three-year waitlist, which we find at about year three, people start to fall off. When we start contacting them, they've made other plans or chosen to, to sell the property or whatnot. And then assess a fifty-dollar entry fee into the lottery is what we're suggesting. That's just for the administration of the process and the, and the lottery itself. Any questions on any of that?
That's all good, although in the final ordinance or amendment, defining greater chance of winning would need to be a little more precise.
Mayor, we have that drafted up. It would be one additional like piece of likelihood of winning for each time in the last consecutive set of lotteries.
Right, yeah, long as there's a formula that.
So basically you get an extra entry if you've been there.
Get an extra ball in the chamber.
Yeah, okay, okay. And that was my question, too.
Yeah, I, I equated it to Hunger Games last time. I don't know if you remember that, you just get another entry into, into the chance.
So what if we have more than ten and fewer than thirty on the waitlist? I'm unclear about this language. Would you only have a lottery for the top ten? Is that what you had in mind?
No, so if we didn't have, so let's say we had nine on the waitlist, I would open the lottery to fill it up to thirty. So if we only got.
Oh, I see.
If we only got.
Thirty, not the.
Right. If we only got, if we had nine on the waitlist, we opened the lottery and we only got fifteen applications. Well, then they, we would just randomly draw them as what position they go on the waitlist, but they would all make the waitlist because it, it wouldn't get us to thirty. We would just have some open spots.
Wouldn't they be at the same position on the waitlist as each other?
No, we would randomly draw them from, so fifteen people applied. We would go through and then randomly draw that fifteen to place them on the waitlist as number ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
I'm confused. I, it's, it doesn't seem to me that if you're in a lottery, I understand the preference if you've been there before, I get that. But if you're in a lottery, your chances and your location should be the same, it seems to me.
Trustee Brown, remember, this is a waitlist lottery. This is the lottery to get on the waitlist. So, we have to put them in a certain order on the waitlist in order for us to know how to pull them off the waitlist.
So, there's not two lotteries, a lottery for a waitlist and a lottery when they get a license?
Okay, I'm just, I think I'm understanding.
Yeah. So, so what we imagine, I think at least at this first year, we obviously in our office imagined quite a number of people coming in because there's been a moratorium for quite some time, that we might see 40, 50 applications that want to be on the lottery and for a chance to be on the waitlist. We will, once we close that lottery, we will then randomly draw from that lottery to place you on the waitlist. The first person we draw becomes position number one on the waitlist. The next one we draw would be position number two and so forth. And then, that's how we determine who's next to get the next available license.
So, does that happen every year or?
It would only happen in the years in which we have 10 or, or fewer.
Okay. But if you're on the waitlist, you don't lose your position?
No.
Once you're, once you go to the lottery and I'm, I'm in the waitlist and I'm, I'm number two, I'm not going to slip to number five because of this. I'm still number two and...
Nope.
So, it really lets me to get on the playing field.
Exactly. That's what we were talking about here with...
But I'm not gonna, I don't go back into the mix again.
No, with that certainty that you, once you're placed on that waitlist, you're going to get a license.
Here, there, until your, until your number comes up.
So, are what you're hearing is good enough to move forward with a proper board meeting ordinance amendment?
I think so, Mayor, except that town clerk Williamson had a couple things she wanted to add into that ordinance.
I just have a couple miscellaneous items, Mayor. But if you're good with these items, I think we're good to bring that forward to you on the 12th. The two miscellaneous amendments I wanted to discuss with you really quickly is something that I've been pondering for a little while. We find ourselves processing, like the one I just told you, somebody let us know the other day that they don't want to continue in the process. Yet, staff has expended a lot of time and energy already in producing the packet and getting information out to them, asking, answering a lot of questions, following up with them on where they are in the process. And what we find right now is we have to then, we get their application and we get their fee and we're processing everything, and then they don't complete the process and we're having to refund the fee. So, two steps, the clerk's office is going to stop collecting the fee upfront, but then what we are asking is whether or not the board would consider an application, like a, a deposit fee of $200 that they would put down. And if they don't complete the process, that $200 is non-refundable. If they do complete the process, we would apply that to their application fee for that year, so that it would just offset some of the staff cost time and time and energy that we are expending right now on these because we find ourselves doing that quite often recently with, with a number of these applications that have been on the waitlist for such a long time. And that, that also includes our, our commercial properties. We sometimes find our commercial properties don't complete the process too for what, whatever reason.
Sorry if you've mentioned this before, but would that same, I'm supportive of that. That makes sense to me. I think that model happens in a lot of different situations too. Are you suggesting the same thing for the waitlist fee? For the lot, the $50 per entry into the lottery, that that would be applicable eventually? Are you just saying it's just 50 bucks to enter the lottery? That's the sunk cost?
Yeah, that's the cost just for us to process the lottery. The second item, if, oh, did you have a question on that? The second item on there is an issue we recently came, happened to be, where we found a property that was advertising. We were able to go on, we were able to, in essence, book the rental at the location. We just didn't hit, you know, submit because we didn't want to spend your all's money on that. And we found ourselves in a situation where we were taking, they were getting ticketed and we were going to court and the prosecutor said, "We're not sure that we can prosecute this." And what's ending up happening is we're having to catch people in the act, per se. And, and code enforcement is spending a lot of time monitoring these. This particular property we're talking about got two tickets for advertising and then got four more tickets for actually renting because code enforcement was visiting so often and trying to, in essence, again, catch them in the act. And what we'd like to know is if you would be amenable to considering amending the code to state that it's a violation to advertise a vacation home for rental without a license. That's really what we're looking for from the board because we're finding that that is occurring and we are trying to address them. This would really help the prosecutor, she said, in prosecuting these types of tickets.
So, yes, I'm, I'm in favor of both. The only thing I'm wondering about is this with the maximum penalty imposed, that would be up to the judge.
The ticket is written right now for $26.50 per night.
$2,650. So, that is the, the maximum amount under state statute that we can find someone. And in our code now, if you're renting without a license, that's the mandatory penalty. So, this would match with that.
Mandatory penalty by state statute?
No, man, by our code.
Municipal code. I just wanted to be clear that that's what we are talking about so that you were aware that that's what we're requesting.
Yeah, I'm okay with both.
I'm okay with what you presented.
Okay.
I do just have one more, and we don't have to talk about it because we're already past time, but I just want to plant the seed. While we were talking about the transferability, I got a note from a constituent who's watching online, who is concerned about the legal protections that an LLC affords somebody and how if we're stripping away the LLC piece, how that compromises folks who own a home and rent it out. So, if there's a possibility to consider that, the LLC, who that's registered, matching the homeownership, if that would accomplish what we're trying to go for? And I, we, we don't, we could talk about it. I just didn't want to bring it up when we have an action item with a completed ordinance.
I think it's a really quick answer because the way we've been talking about it, we would allow the LLC to continue owning the home. It just wouldn't be the license holder. It would be a natural person who holds the license, but property insurance would presumably go to that LLC.
It defers to the ownership versus the person who holds the license?
Typically, property insurance goes to the owner of the home and the owner of the home would be, I can't speak for the insurance companies, but I, I expect that's how that would work.
Okay. They're, I think they're going to reach out. So, maybe that's just something we could address when it does come on November 12th. Specifically, could we just talk about that if there's anything that's different than what you've shared? Do you know what I'm saying?
I don't know how much I'll be able to glean, but I, we can have that conversation.
I just want to make sure we don't all of a sudden have a bunch of vacation home licenses that are now, individual people are going to be held liable for, versus their LLC and the legal protection they've put in place.
In terms of our code liability, it is on the license holder. That would be on that natural person. I, I don't know that I'm going to be able to advise them on liability risks one way or the other beyond what our code says.
So, you're agreeing that if we, if it's not in an LLC name, it, the liability goes directly to a natural person?
Li, if, if what's not in the LLC name, the ownership?
The license.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about, under our code, you could get a ticket, you could be fined for violating the code if you're the license holder. And here, we're saying the license holder would be a natural person.
I'll take it offline with you since we're already past time. Thanks.
Well, I think we do want to have the fine go to the license holder. They're not responsible, otherwise you don't want to chase after an LLC.
It's more about if a guest has a legal issue with a short-term rental and it's not in an LLC name.
Yeah, I, I don't know how definitive, sorry, trustee Brown.
No, no, it's liability issues beyond licensure penalties, I don't think is in our purview. Liability issues are a big, much bigger topic, right? I mean, slip and fall or, you know, whatever. I don't think we want our code to address those. I think certainly...
I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, okay.
I'll follow up with you.
The only other thing I'll say is that typically, if, if someone has a personal injury claim and they want to bring a suit, they will bring it against anyone and everyone and the courts will have to sort that out. I, I don't know that I'm going to be able to speak with any kind of specificity as to what their liability risk might be there. I don't, I don't know that I can say a whole lot more than that.
All right, good. We're right at 6 o'clock straight up. Let's see if we can, I know I saw them deliver stuff. Let's see if we can get back by 6:07. Okay, we're on break. Dan, we're all here. Can we go ahead and start? Okay, this study session is back in session. And we're going to talk about the intergovernmental agreement between the town and, or the, that supervises the VEP relationship that we have between the town and Laramie County. And I think you own this, Travis.
Thanks, Mayor. We are here tonight to present and discuss the proposed amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between the town and the county that provides for the operations of the local marketing district, Visitesus Park. The primary feedback we're looking for, the board, we're looking for from the board tonight is, does this IGA meet the needs that you've articulated in prior meetings? Are there other edits that you would like us to discuss with the county prior to bringing this IGA back for consideration at a future town board meeting? By way of short background, we've had two sessions on this. One, a joint session on May 6th with the town board and county commissioners about Visitesus Park. One of the agenda items at that meeting was a review of the IGA between the town and the county. At that meeting, the town board directed attorney Kramer and I to work with county attorney Rusu and county manager Volker to review our current IGA and consider some proposed changes for discussion with the board. We brought back some suggested changes for discussion at the May 27th town board study session. You all discussed those changes at a concep- You all discussed those changes at a conceptual level, gave feedback, and Attorney Kramer and I took that feedback and worked with County Attorney Rissou and County Manager Volker to create the restated IGA in front of you tonight. I have highlighted the significant modifications. There are the original IGA from 2019 is included for reference in the 2023 amendment. When sixty passed, we amended the IGA, but we did not restate it. So effectively, you need to read the 2019 IGA and the 2023 amendment together to get the current operation or current operational IGA. So the highlights of the significant modifications include some cleanup provisions for elections. If Visitas Park seeks or is required to submit any question to an election, it clarifies who's responsible, who's bearing the costs of the election, how that coordination is going to happen. It reduces the number of Visitas Park directors through natural attrition from seven members to five. The town going from five appointed members to three, the county remaining at two appointed members. A change is that it requires two of the town appointees shall be chosen from the town board and one of the county appointees shall be chosen from the county commissioner. This is an effort to ensure that level of governance focus of that board. You will effectively have three elected officials on that board at any given time if this proposed IGA moves forward in its current form. As part of that, it creates a new quorum, three directors, and it does require three affirmative votes for the Visitas Park Board to act. So if you only have three directors show up at a meeting, any action requires a majority vote. The intent behind that is with the small board, we want to make sure that a majority of the board is always making the decisions regardless of whether you have everybody at the meeting or not. One of the most important things it does is changes the process for removing an appointed director. Prior to this change, indeed, the current operation of the IGA requires a collective vote and a majority of a collective vote. This separates that and puts the town in charge of the town appointees and the county in charge of the county appointees. There's no cross voting on appointees. There's no collective voting on appointees. The town is responsible for its appointees, including the two trustees. The county is responsible for its appointees, including the county commissioner. As part of the folk in trying to replicate some of the marketing advisory work that the current Visitas Park Board has been doing, it establishes a marketing advisory committee and provides a mechanism for current directors to transition to that committee without an interview. That's in section seven. It outlines the desired composition of that group. Some of you may recognize that that's very similar to the sixty task force group, the composition there, trying to make sure that there's a broad base of interests on that marketing advisory committee. That is an advisory-only committee. It will advise the Visitas Park Board of Directors on elements related to marketing. It requires Visitas Park to include a policy and bylaw compliance report for the previous twelve-month period. As we all know, that operating plan does not come on a calendar year, so it's it's a September to September period, realistically probably an August to August reporting period. And it does require a proposed line item budget in the annual operating plan. And lastly, it requires a majority vote of each entity to terminate the IGA and dissolve Visitas Park. Advantages, we believe this properly aligns the power to remove a Visitas Park Board member with the board that appointed that member. It addresses some of the concerns expressed about Visitas Park governance by requiring those three elected officials to serve on the board. Those three elected officials will typically have a stronger background in governance in governance itself. The Marketing Advisory Board will help provide detailed feedback on the development and implementation of marketing strategies, so the Board of Directors won't have to focus as much on that. And then it just generally cleans up and restates the town and county's agreement, so we're back to having one agreement. I will say it also creates a an opportunity to clean up and restate the Visitas Park bylaws, which is also important. Under disadvantages, it does add additional requirements for elements of the operating plan, which will inevitably take more time for Visitas Park staff to produce. Happy to answer any questions you have. Next steps from today, if there are suggested or desired amendments, we would go back to the county attorney and the county manager to talk through those. We're looking to get this to the soonest board meeting that we can, and some of that will depend on the the level of change this board would like to see in that agreement. We do believe that the county commissioners, the county commissioners have seen this and I believe are generally comfortable with the provisions therein. They've discussed it in some of their meetings. So we have a general sense from them. That's not saying that the board can't request changes. It may it may lead to a little bit of a delay in trying to true up the last little bit of this. So probably either October twenty eighth or the November twelfth meeting is when we would be targeting unless there's significant changes that will require more back and forth between county and town. Happy to answer any questions you might have or take any feedback about the direction we're heading.
I had a discussion with Town Administrator Mahalik about a week and a half ago because when I looked through it, it looked to me like one of the concerns back when we were talking about reworking the IGA, that there were a couple spots in that agreement that it didn't make it explicitly clear that it would require a majority of both boards to approve certain things. We identified four items in there. Two of them are very clear and the process definitely would require a majority of both boards, town board and Board of Commissioners, and that was nine one, the approval of the workforce, housing and childcare funding plan. That's great. I like that clarity. Both both boards would have to have a majority to approve in sequence. The termination of the IGA, there is a process explicitly defined in there that would require that, but there were two places, six eight and eight three, that did not explicitly state that serial voting or majority of both votes in order to do it. One of them is adoption and modification of the LMD bylaws. It did not explicitly state that you'd have to have a majority of both boards or that you would do them serially and thereby get that double majority. And approval of the operating plan, section eight three. Those were the two sections that I was looking for a little bit of explicitness so that we wouldn't get into a situation where when we were talking about dissolution of the board, I was looking at the potential of a vote of ten people. Six people would have passed it and it could have been zero of the county commissioners or it could have been three of the county commissioners and a minority of the town board, which would also make six. Either way, a minority of one of the boards would have voted in favor of that. So I only bring this forward for clarity. It doesn't change the substance of it, but just making it clear that do we always vote first and then the Board of Commissioners takes it and votes afterwards? And is that explicit enough or is it so embedded in history that everybody else understands that except me?
Mayor, I always say that I never have a problem with making a document more clear. So I don't I don't think it's worth like, is it clear enough? If there's a way to make it more clear, I think we can do that by adding one word to each of those provisions.
Yeah.
And I think we can send that to the county. I'd be surprised if they had any issue with that.
So that that was one piece. The second question that I would bring forth, the bringing it down to five members and having the Marketing Advisory Board. And I understand what the purpose of that is, is to have that Marketing Advisory Board still provide community input, if we will, lodging and whatever. That does mean, though, that the board, the VEP board then, has three government-appointed members and not very many from the lodging community perhaps, which I think when it all started, when that board started, the presence of the lodging community was a pretty important part. I see that we're offsetting that by trying to put that in the Marketing Advisory Board, and I just wonder how the other trustees feel about that, whether that would actually suit the purpose or are we diluting the presence of the lodging community in significant decisions? And that's all I have.
Well, jump in. I really like this a lot. I think you did a great job with it. Has worked out. You know, the idea of the marketing committee is not new. It came up with some recommendations probably a decade ago. There are other destination marketing organizations that operate this way with because governing is a different skill than marketing. And to think that the people who are dealing with the day-to-day governance of the budget and appointing of staff and things like that have the expertise in destination marketing is a little naive. I don't think that's there. Or to think that people who are really good at marketing are good at governing, it separates those two out. I think we have had people join the the VEP board who are thrilled about the marketing part of this, want to do marketing, want to talk about marketing, are not really thrilled with the day-to-day governance. That's not their expertise. It's not what they're good at. It's not what they want to do. So it separates that out. I think it's a great solution and it's worked in other communities, so I like that a lot. There are a couple of questions I had. One, it seems like there's there really don't have a limit on the size of the marketing committee, which I'm okay with that. I think you can decide what expertise you need. Another thing, it doesn't say that the marketing committee must be from Estes Park. And actually, I would say that's okay. If they decide they have somebody who's a marketing expert who wants to participate and help us, maybe a professor of tourism marketing from UNC, and we can get that expertise on our marketing advisory committee, more power to them. I think that'd be great. So I don't think that's not in there and I don't think we should put it in there. I'm okay with that, that they can get the best expertise they can. And I do think the other thing, the small lodge, retail and all that has to be there as fundamental, but if they want to augment it with other expertise, I think that's great. I really like that idea.
So the goal with this section, and you'll note that it is a little, it's fairly lean. The intent was to allow the Visitas Park Board of Directors to really talk through, discuss at a detailed level what type of parameters it wants, if any, on the Marketing Advisory Committee, including size, frequency of meeting, residency requirements. That was not seen when we were talking to our county counterparts. It was not seen as something that necessarily the governing boards would want to dictate, but rather something to lead to the Visitas Park Board to really articulate what specific format that would take.
I think that's great. Long time ago, somebody said, you always want, if you're going to have some advisors, you need to pick your advisors. You don't want somebody else picking your financial advisor. You pick your financial advisor. Same way here, the whole board should pick who they want to advise them because it is advising, it's not a decision-making board. So I think they should have that. I like that a lot. The one thing that I did have a question, we got an email late this afternoon about this, and I kind of agree with him, was from Mike Zumba, was just the timing of requiring the full budget to be done by September thirtieth. That might be a little bit of a push. I mean, I I do think the operating plan in some ways, some of the ones in the past, I think have been a little too fluffy and without the meat, and the budget is the meat. But for two things, that's pretty early. He made the point that they don't get their tax information till later. We don't have our budget all the way done by September thirtieth. That's so maybe there's a way to work on that. And the other thought I had was the budget should be a reflection of the operating plan. So is it putting the cart before the horse to have them do the budget before we've approved an operating plan? Because there may be some things we want in the operating plan that they need to budget for. It can be close behind, but I do think the if we're really going to be serious about the operating plan saying this is what they're going to do, which is what the statute says it has to be, then the budget should follow the operating plan and that can't happen if they both happen simultaneously. So I think if there's a way to push that off a little bit, but still put the emphasis on having to have that budget, I'd like to see that changed maybe. Otherwise, I think it's great. I really like this a lot.
Just to defend Director Zimmerman, we did have our budget done before the middle of September this year. It is it is possible, and I understand, you know, we're dealing with an eighty-plus million-dollar budget. A two percent revenue assumption is not small, but it kind of evens out in the grand scheme of things when you're looking at a four-point-five-million-dollar budget. You know, two months of revenue are a big deal. You do get more accurate. I I do think the requirement of a of a line item budget is important and should be in there, but we can go back to the drawing board on the timing of that. We could even require the, you know, that be submitted as a appendix after the operating plan is approved because it does make sense that the budget is built on the operating plan, though I'm not sure that it specifically lines up like that because they're having to make assumptions as well. We can look at the timing of that. I do think it's important that the governing boards receive a line item budget.
Just to follow up, I agree with you completely. But I think it does to be continued. And if you look at our budget, our operating plan is our strategic plan, which we finish in June, and then we do our budget based on that. We're asking them to do both simultaneously. So I still think having the some type of split there would be good, but I agree with you absolutely. The operating plan needs to be meatier than it has been in the past and the budget somehow has to get tied to that really strongly and to make sure that those, because that's where the real responsibility of the board is to look at that budget and how they're spending the money.
So I couldn't agree more with that. I mean, I actually think the way we do our strategic plan and our budgeting makes sense. So for them, exactly do the exact same time. What if their operating plan gets changed? And then their budget has to get changed. I'd rather have that budget a little bit later, but I do think that we have to approve both. So that's number one. Number two is I really like the way it's broken down. As it is right now, just from being on the board, the board itself gets way into the weeds of the daily activity of marketing. And honestly, I know nothing about marketing. I mean, like whatsoever, except for making a big chicken shack, but other than that, you know, I have like no marketing skills whatsoever. And so for me to sit through a meeting and listen to the daily marketing, I have nothing to add and I have nothing really to, but what I do have to add is the governance and the budgeting and those kind of things. And so I really like it separated out like that because I just can't add anything to the marketing conversations. And I do think sometimes the marketing people that are not into budgets get really excited about something and aren't really thinking about the budgeting and the governance. So I do think separating that is really important.
So my question is for Marie and Kirby. Are the other directors of existing directors of Visitas Park behind this these concepts? And particularly the shrinking of the board size and the creation of the marketing advisory group?
I haven't received any feedback about if they're supportive of it or not. We did share the packet with them and let them know it was going to be discussed and invited the board members to share their input. So I have not heard. I will say that, and maybe Time Commissioner Mahalik can talk about this a little bit more, but the natural attrition piece, we have a board member who's term limited, whose term is up at the end of December, so would be naturally falling off the board. And then you did receive word that one of the county appointees, Pat Murphy, resigned from his position and the county commissioners appointed Jody into his seat. So some of this transition has has begun. But as far as your question in particular about if we've heard feedback, I haven't. And I'm happy to give you back the mic if you have more comments.
My only other comment is I agree with Frank and Marie about the budget being later because it, yeah, I'm bored with that.
Yeah, I think Mike's request about the timing of the line, a but line item budget makes sense, and I think requesting it as an appendix and maybe when they file, you know, their official budget like that, that would be the time when we would want to see that come forward. And I think his request to have that be more of a general proposed budget that maybe goes in line with the operating plan seems reasonable. But I think I think the focus of including that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that item in the IGA is not on the timing, it's on having a line item budget. So I think that our feedback on the timing makes perfect sense, but I would push back strongly on not having a line item budget included in the IGA. Otherwise, I had just wanted to share that I've had the ability to talk with Travis about this a few different times, obviously, and I'm really supportive of the change. I think it allows the fundamental and structural issues that we've seen within the I think it allows the fundamental and structural issues that we've seen within the board that have existed for years across different people, across different leadership, to be addressed and fixed. Personally, I was a little bit concerned about that natural attrition part, but I think it's an acceptable, acceptable negotiation. And honestly, with some of the recent changes in the past, you know, 48 hours, I think we're going to arrive there anyway. And my reason for that in particular was not related to the members of the board. It's related to the fact that there's a new CEO coming on, so trying to diminish the amount of change in board structure when that new CEO comes on and how that works. But again, I think we're arriving at some of these changes already. So I think they've done a wonderful job, and I want to commend you all for that, and I think it's going to help resolve some of these issues that we've seen again for, honestly, the better part of a decade.
I totally agree with Kirby. I think this really addresses a lot of those issues that we've seen occurring time and time again. And I really like the advisory board for the, for the advertising and a piece of it, because you're right, Marie. You're not always expertise in both fields, so, and I like that, that the, it really isn't stuck to just a resident, although, you know, that can be discussed at the board level of what they want to, how they want to see that. But I hope that they, you know, really take to heart having lesser restriction on something brings the ability to even have more expertise at the table. So line item for sure, the dates, obviously, I agree, need to be tweaked a little bit, but overall, excellent work. I'm excited to hear that you did say that the county commissioners were, weren't really struggling with any piece of this, so that was promising, because I think it is important for us to move on this as quickly as possible with the new CEO coming in. To have less up in the air is best, so good job, guys.
Bill, Trustee Brown, I think it was a good question in regard to some of the past or, or current members of the board. I don't know what mechanism it could follow if any of them choose to provide input that could be part of the subsequent step when we're looking at this as potentially a vote or implementation of this, albeit with a couple of little one-word tweaks or whatever. I would suggest we ask for that input, because my sense is that it would not be unanimity behind this approach. That does not represent my opinion. I, I do believe that you would not hear a chorus supporting this infrastructure change. And whether there's merit in that, that's for this board to decide. But I think it would be worthy to collect that information if individuals are willing to provide that.
I just want to briefly add my support for the changes that you made and have proposed here. There have been some challenges and opportunities, I think, in the last few years, but very recently that this addresses, and it seems to be a fair, responsible approach to this relationship. So the questions that have been asked cover all the questions I had, and I want to just lend my support to what you have prepared here.
So good work. Based on this, it sounds like we're probably ready, based on what I'm hearing from the board here, and there's a couple little tweaks there just for clarity, that we may be ready to move to whatever that next phase is in formality of it. And I would encourage input from VEP Board members and any other folks who choose to comment on those changes in infrastructure.
Thanks, Mayor. We do have, we want to clarify the individual board votes explicitly in that document so that nobody has the idea that there's a collective vote anywhere, and then altering the timeline for that line item budget delivery to better align with the operating plan acceptance or approval.
Any questions, comments? I think we've got it. We can move on to, I don't think there, yeah, let's see. Okay, future study session items.
Mayor, we had just a couple, pulling them up. So we have a very heavy study session proposed for our next meeting on the 28th, and we'd like to do the visitor center parking lot item as a report and discussion item at the regular board meeting instead of trying to add that to the very loaded October 28th study session. We will have our post office operational perspective from the route carriers. We have the annexation policy IGA with Laramie County, policy 601, spending authority limits and overnight parking. So if the board's okay, we'd like to move the visitor center parking lot design to the regular board meeting as a report and discussion item.
I see nobody pressing against that.
We would like to retitle the annexation IGA with Laramie County to annexation policy and potential IGA with Laramie County to more accurately reflect that discussion as it's happened to date. And then one future unscheduled item, vendor fee rate for sales tax collection. Just very briefly, the state has changed its rules as it faces a budget deficit relative to the vendor fee on sales tax. That's the amount a vendor can hold back to essentially adjust for their time spent preparing the sales tax return. The state has essentially said, you can't retain any money anymore because we need to patch a budget hole. I believe the county has done the same thing. The town needs to make a decision on that. We're not going to try to push this by the end of the year. We have too much going on. The only time you can change sales tax-related things is before January or before July. So we want to come to the town board. It is a board policy decision about whether we leave our vendor fee alone and allow vendors to retain the town portion of that in perpetuity or whether we change it. So we would like that, add that to approve unscheduled, probably February next year as a, starting as a study session item.
Did you say the county is aligning, you believe they're going to align with the state?
That, yes. My understanding from Director Zimmerman is the county is aligned with the state. I don't know what other municipalities are doing. Frankly, it doesn't really matter. It's how the town board wants to approach it philosophically from a town taxing policy standpoint.
Okay. Trustees, any, any items for future study sessions? I, I know there's been a couple of emails coming from some businesses and merchants, but I'm, I haven't shaped any thoughts around any of those things, so I have nothing to bring for it. All right. Well, with that being said, thanks for keeping us safe so far, Officer Paul, and this session is adjourned. Wow, I didn't think we'd get through that so quickly.